It is 7 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us at our Board of Education meeting for November 20th. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in the room and online. Just real quick, a few couple remarks that I wanted to share, and I'm sure Superintendent Burke is going to be discussing the Veterans Day events in more detail later. But I had the pleasure of attending two of the Veterans Day celebrations last week. I went to Wells Road and I went to the middle school. It was truly a pleasure. The speakers were fantastic. The kids were really engaged and it was just really well done. Wells Road in particular, it was a really great presentation and the kids were in it. It was fun to watch. So, thank you to all the teachers and staff for putting together those presentations and making it such an interactive and fantastic learning experience for our kids. I also wanted to mention real quick that in the past few months, I have been submitting articles to the Drummer in regard to a variety of different topics. It's been kind of getting buried in there, so I just want to make sure people are aware that it is there. The most recent one did discuss bullying. Another one, we discussed FERPA and communication issues as well. So, please be sure to keep an eye out for those articles. Superintendent Burke also submits articles that can give great insights in regard to certain processes and procedures, chain or course of action for certain types of issues that you want to address. And we're trying to make them as easy to access as possible. So, keep an eye out for those articles as well. I do confess that one coming up for December is a little lighter than our normal topics, so in recognition of the holidays and such. All right, moving along to awards and recognition. Tonight, we are recognizing our Teacher of the Year, Kristen Laflamme. So, I'm going to come on down to the podium. I'm going to ask Pauline and Kristen to join me, please. After graduating Granby Memorial High School in 1999, Kristen immediately began her path to becoming a teacher. She attended Eastern Connecticut State University, graduating with a degree in psychology and certificate in early childhood education. After a brief stint in Coventry as a student teacher, Kristen landed a position at the then Kelly Lane Intermediate School in 2004. Alongside teaching, she continued her education obtaining a master's degree in elementary education from Central Connecticut State University. When asked on her application why she wanted to become a teacher, Kristen stated, "Despite never receiving formal training as an educator herself, my mom's way of life and the values she and my father imparted on my sister and me naturally steered me on a path toward teaching." Beyond the Teacher Work Day, Kristen extends herself to the Granby community as a field hockey coach and has participated in various local events, including the Granby Road Brace and the Grand B. So, welcome, Ms. Laflamme. Congratulations on your Teacher of the Year. It's so very exciting.
Thank you.
Pauline, do you have some words to share as well?
Sure. Oh, right. So, one is, I will say to you that we could not have been more excited when her name was announced at the end of the school year last year, simply because I think this was a long time coming. My son went to Kelly Lane School. I knew a lot of-- he didn't actually have Mrs. Laflamme, but I already knew who she was. And I described her as one of the most natural teachers that I know. She's honest. Her classroom is honest. The kids resonate with her because of that. She feels like a real person to them and they connect to her in amazing ways. So, she's been kind of putting this off and putting this off. And I think finally, her team encouraged her to go for it. And I couldn't be more proud because she really is a wonderful representation of the hard work that teachers do every day to connect with their students, to educate their students, as well as to hold their students accountable. And I really, we couldn't be more happy for her and for the Wells Road community.
Thank you. A certificate here as well.
Thank you.
Sergeant Laflamme would like to come up as well to get some photographs.
Yeah, so I have-- this was just based on my little teacher's speech. So, we talked a lot about teamwork and connectivity. And so, each member of the school's staff got a little keychain that we made, a Lego one. So, if you would like to pass it around with your colors and then turn it out to that as well.
Thank you so much. I love that. That's fantastic.
Huge lift.
Huge lift of Legos myself.
Why don't you go in?
Okay, perfect.
Sure.
You can jump in too. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going green.
Okay.
I use my Lego keychain every day. My kids might get jealous.
Purple, of course. Thank you so much again for joining us. It's a pleasure. We're going to move on to public comment. Granby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the Board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the Board, and Board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in dialogue. As it deemed appropriate, the Board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to five minutes, and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the Superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member, or to discuss student matters which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the Superintendent and her team. Do we have anyone present in the room for public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, we're going to move to Zoom. If there's anybody on Zoom who wishes to make public comment, please let us know. And you can also enter your name into the chat so we can be sure that you're in the queue. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment? Going once? No? No responses. Okay, going twice? All right, we're moving along to Student Representative Reports, where I think we have a lot of exciting things going on. We have Phoebe O'Neil joining us tonight.
I would like to say it's good to be back. I know I had a long absence during the volleyball season, but I'm back. I'm going to switch it up today and start with sports. Girls soccer unfortunately lost in the second round of the States to Fairfield, but they had a very good season. As well as field hockey ended their season in the quarterfinals against North Branford. They also had a very good season. I think they won their conference, so very good performance. Boys soccer season ended in the semis against Northwestern. It was really unfortunate, but they lost by one in PKs. And this was after experiencing some injuries. So, it wasn't like probably their strongest lineup, but they still put up a very good fight. And our girls volleyball team made it to the state finals after winning their regular season conference and tournament conference. Unfortunately, we lost to finals and we were state runners-up to Joel Barlow. But it was a very good season. I have no complaints. And wrapping up for fall sports, varsity football has a game this Friday against North Branford. It's-- I have it as away, but I think it's home. And JV has a game Saturday morning also against North Branford, away. And moving on to winter sports, we haven't started formal practices yet, but I know that girls and boys basketball teams are working together to hold a first night of Granby basketball event as a fundraiser for the season, similar to many colleges like UConn that holds first night to welcome in the fans and get everybody excited about the season. And currently, it is Saturday, December 7th at 5:00 in the main gym of the high school. And there will be three-point shooting contests, scrimmages, bake sale. It'll be lots of fun. And then for current events, was it last week or the week before, we held Veterans Day where we had, I think it was a record of 25 veterans that came to our school, which has been more than in the past. And because of that, we were able to split up into smaller panels for each grade. So, the seniors, we were able to talk to some older veterans and get some insight on their service and how they live their lives, which was very rewarding, I would say. Last week, we had two early release days for parent-teacher conferences, as well as last Saturday, DECA had their can and bottle drive, and it was a big hit. Now, we're looking forward towards sorting our collectible cans and finding a date to donate them. Twisted Tales of Poe wrapped up an amazing weekend of performances. It was very good, guys. If you missed it, I'm sorry, but we're looking forward to Legally Blonde in the spring. Turkey Trot was today, hosted by NHS during advisory, where we ran around the school for a minute trying to collect money for food share. Also, Spanish and French AP classes had a field trip today to Boston to visit the art museum, and they were able to immerse themselves in rich culture and take in the many sights of Boston. Powder puff practices are well underway in preparation for our big game next Tuesday at 2:45. I know that the seniors are very prepared, so hopefully the juniors can put up a fight.
Thank you all that. Congratulations to you on an outstanding volleyball season. We know how involved you are in everything and with your studies as well. So, congratulations on a fantastic achievement. All right, reports and discussion. I believe we have Principal Baba and Principal Greer here to discuss the goings-on at Kelly Lane and Wells Road.
Hello.
Hi.
Which one are you?
Kelly Lane.
That would be important to note.
All right. All right, so we're going to go through a few of the successes, achievements, and beliefs that we have over the course of the year. We're going to start with notable successes at Kelly Lane. So, this past year, we achieved 95% of attendance rate for the 2023-24 school year, which demonstrated a strong engagement with students. That was a significant decrease of almost 6% from the previous year. So, we went from 11.11% to five and a little over 5.1%. So, that is a huge reflective of proactive attendance initiatives that we had put forward. We implemented a streamlined approach to our intervention process, addressing student academic, social, and behavioral needs. So, that has helped out a lot in terms of identifying students early. We're excited to launch our pilot this year. So, we had initiated our ELA pilot for all grades K-2, 3, but K-2 at Kelly Lane, and really researching and digging deep into a couple different ELA programs to really see what fits us the best and focusing on those foundational skills. We launched Community Connections last year, which was how we connect our kids to community events and seeing the bigger picture outside of just the four walls or 18 walls of Kelly Lane. That helped. We did Kelly Lane cares bags for homeless shelters, which included collecting donations, like toothbrushes and soap, socks, things like that, that we put in little bags that we donated to them, food drives, which we have done for our Turkey Trot that is coming up, and other community events such as writing notes to children at Children's Hospital and at Veterans Day. So, a lot of great things happening. And one of our biggest successes last year was the Lending Library. We had a parent who was an art teacher at a local school, and he painted our lending library, which is up in the right-hand corner, and we celebrated it as a whole school. We filled that multiple times over the summer. So, we know students were visiting that, but that's in access of free literature for all Granby community members. Supporting our connect area, we have this year instituted monthly school-wide character trait focuses. So, the whole school focuses on a trait. This month, we're doing flexibility to really connect that to all parts of the school, including their academic and behavioral traits. So, when we are talking about that in school, the teachers are talking about them. They're connecting them to how they can be flexible when things get hard and when things don't go their way, sometimes maybe with a peer relationship. We've also worked on responsibility and relationship building. So, each month, we're taking a different focus and spreading that through the whole school. Our vertical cares group, which I've talked about before, but we're really embedding that this year, is where we have about eight students in each little cares group, we call it. And from kindergarten, we have about two or three, first grade, two or three, and second grade, two and three. And they stay in the same group for three years. And they rotate, and they are with the same adults, so that they build that strong relationship with a positive adult, almost like a mentor, as they go through the years of Kelly Lane. So, the only change that happens is when second grade goes to third, we get new kindergartners into that group. It's great for the second graders, too, to be a little model citizen and to show them. We have sustained participation in our Unified Sports. This is our third year going strong with that. And we have sustained volunteerism within our school and our community. We have a couple of high school students that have volunteered to do some hours, and they are now part of that program. So, it's nice to see the bridge of the different levels. And then we have some Boston Positive Office referrals. And we have initiated a lot of family literacy events last year, One Book, One School. And we did a family literacy night through the week of conferences, which we will continue this year as well, so that they were able to kind of see what literacy looks like at the elementary school. Believe, that is an area that we strongly all believe in, that all kids can in many different areas. One thing that we really instituted this year was school-wide committees. So, all staff members are on a committee, whether it's a school-wide culture, which is family and student engagement, climate, which also is how we feel about the school, welcoming schools, such as when parents walk in, how do you feel when they come in, and what is the feel of the building for both students and for families. And then our Equity Committee connects with the Granby Equity Team goals also, and then moving that work forward into the classrooms. We have lunch and learn opportunities. Those are opportunities that teachers actually sign up for on their own, and they do it during their lunchtime. And then peers are giving the PD. So, if somebody's doing something really wonderful in their classroom or has a new thing that they went and learned at PD, they come and then they teach it to the teachers. And we've had a great sign-up. We just had one last week, and we had 12 teachers sign up, 12 staff members. So, that's a pretty good number when you think about that. Our classroom learning experiences are something that we really are strongly proud of. And that is, each classroom is providing two opportunities for families to come in and learn about school. They can come and do math centers. They can come and do writing tasks with their children. But they're actually engaging in the work so that they can see. And the students are so proud to show off what they can do. So, that is something that we look forward to, and we really are continuing to grow that and giving those opportunities to families to come into the classroom. Our weekly newsletters and our book buddy program also is in our third year, and that has been strong. We actually had more volunteers. I don't want to say it too loud because I want volunteers, but we had more volunteers and kindergartners this year. So, it was nice to have those extra people in the wings or be a classroom book buddy. So, it was really nice to see that. Thank you for everybody who's also a volunteer from the Board in other areas. Achieve, that's when you believe and you connect with kids, you know the achievement's going to be there. So, we have really instituted grade-level PLCs. So, our PLC time with teachers and with our coaches have really been strong in identifying strategies and looking at data to move the work forward. We have worked on our teaching assistance for personalized skill practice. In the past, we've really done more generalized TA, PD, and helping them support the work. But this is really skill-based of what the students need based on their assessments. We are building shared common resources. So, based on the PLC goal in the first bullet, that's like the professional learning goal, like if they are improving math facts to hit our math goal. That is something that we are all putting together, shared common resources, so that we, again, move the work forward. So, the more that we do in common language and common with students, all the students will succeed. So, if somebody's doing something really well in their classroom, they're dumping that in and they're sharing that. This year, we have instituted the RISE program, where we are supporting our students all individually. I know Kate White-Garner had talked about that in the previous Board of Ed meeting, but those are students that are identified to have alternative learning spaces that helps build their success, and they gradually move back into the classroom. And so that has been a really great positive thing for our school community. We continue to work on peer learning walks, where other, again, teacher-led, they go into classrooms, they give feedback, they look at what's working, they have some wonderings, "Oh, I wonder how you're doing this," and I'd like to implement that in my classroom. And student-led conferences, this will be, again, our third year, but the first year was a pilot. Everybody got to choose a student or two. Last year, it was like, "Try half your class," and now it's, most of them chose to come in. And the learning for kids is amazing. And you can see one of the examples up there of the student in kindergarten that is sharing their work. So, yes, kindergartner kids can do student-led conferences. They show something that they're working on, something they're proud of, and something they're working So, that leads to consideration. So, in budget season coming up, we definitely want to look forward at what our needs are. And one of the things we want to continue to do is make sure that we have adequate staffing to support those specific needs, especially in the areas of our RISE program, something that, you know, we want to continue to grow and support our students. And then increase self-regulation and behavioral needs. As we all know, there's always some need for that. So, continuing to look at ways how we can embed that support into our budget and into our staffing needs is something to consider as we move forward. Scheduling due to fluctuation sections. So, since I've been here, this is my fifth year, our fluctuations in sections have happened. We went from 7-7-7 to now we are 5-7-6. So, there's definitely different shifts that happen. And yes, that's due to population and growth in that area. But we want to make sure that we are just looking at what our scheduling needs with staffing to make sure that everybody gets what they need. And of course, the new reading legislation is something big that's on the table, especially in a budget area. So, we want to make sure that we're making the best decision moving forward. And I think we've done a really nice job to compile that information, and we're excited to share that in the future Board meetings. And assessment software is something that you'll also see as a consideration in the budget. And one of those areas is, we are moving with the new reading legislation to make sure that we are supporting our assessments that align with the reading. And we've been doing that homegrown and doing that on our own right now and putting that into our own assessment. So, now it'd be great to have something that does that work for you. It gives a quicker feedback as well. So then, some of our long-term plans. The play legislation has gone into effect this current year. So, that is, students all should have some opportunity to have open-ended play. And we've started that with our soft starts in the morning, which I shared previously at a Board meeting. But we want to even deepen that even better. So, one of that is really planned play. So, they create a plan of what they're going to play, how they play with a peer, and how we support that. So, there's materials. There's things like PD that we need to give and some professional development and to increase that. But that is something that we need to look forward to and continue to build in our schools. Sustainability of a schedule, that goes with a consideration, just looking at our current staffing and where the needs are and where we can support. Increased preschool opportunities is something as well as a long-term plan, especially with the legislation of kindergarten going a little bit earlier to 5:00. So, let's look at a fours and increase our fours in our preschool. That's space, and that's teachers, and that's a long-term plan, but something to start thinking about. And again, the ELA implementation, if we have our software, if we have our books, and we have our resources, we will have a successful implementation. And I am very excited to start that and gear up our teachers for that. And one thing, with all of the changes in our math, in our ELA, and with our social, emotional, we definitely need to take a look at our revised report cards and progress reports. Our report cards are outdated, and we need to look at more standard space and look at more reporting for-- it's hard for parents to know what we're actually reporting out on. So, it's a lot of conversation at parent conferences that's explaining what's on the report card rather than it being right there. So, that's something that we want to move to a more clear objectives and more clear communication of what we're reporting out.
Thank you. Sounds great. I had a couple of really quick questions. First of all, in regard to the book buddy program, are you still looking for volunteers for that?
We have met our quota this year.
You have met your quota.
And beyond.
Wow.
Yes.
All right.
So, it's great. But I mean, we welcome classroom book buddies, too. But yes, we actually have our first one on Friday.
Okay, excellent. And then I just wanted to clarify, the lunch and learn opportunities, these are teachers helping or working with other teachers, correct?
Yep. So, yes, correct. So, what happens, this year over the summer, I reached out to my staff and asked who has something that they feel that they could contribute professionally, and they sign up. Last year, we dipped our toe in it and had a couple people, but it was so successful that the sessions that people wanted to present outweighed the times that I had. So, trying to figure out that. We actually had some opportunity during that full-day PD to offer more opportunities for those teachers to give the PD that I wasn't able to fit into the schedule of our days. But yeah, it's been great.
Excellent. Does anybody on the Board have questions?
I'm curious about your attendance initiatives, because I know that's kind of a problem statewide, maybe nationwide. So, what specifics have you done to get that attendance rate so low or the absenteeism rate?
Yeah. So, one of the things, if you go back to the first one, Attendance Matters has a whole website that helps support initiatives to go forward. So, one is having a team that meets monthly to review the monthly data of where our students are falling short on attendance, and then calling those families in, maybe having a plan going forward. Is it health-related? Is it transportation? But one of the big things is really just getting kids excited to come to school. And so, like our red carpet event on the day one, having spirit days. I know some of it seems like a lot of spirit days, but it really gets the kids in, and we have high attendance on those days. So, we're able to look at a calendar and track when days are that they're higher and lower. And those are the days that we see when we have special events. Today, for the author visit, it increases attendance.
Question under considerations, you know, staffing to support specific needs. We specifically mentioned increased self-regulation and behavioral needs. Are we meeting what we need currently?
Yeah. So, currently, one of those bullets, I have, last year, we applied for a grant. It's called the Primary Play Project. And that is a national grant that we were awarded for two years. And we're in our second year. And that is play-based intervention for behavioral and emotional support. So, students who are not at that referral to special education yet, but need a little bit of boost of that one-to-one adult connection. And so, we're closing that grant out. So, looking forward to seeing how we can supplement that, because it has been a really successful program. Lots of positive feedback from parents and lots of positive feedback from teachers. And teachers, I wish every student actually could be a part of this program. It's wonderful. We have a wonderful special education teacher who only wants to work part-time, and she's working, well, she's amazing at it. And she has really supported the program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving. Principal Greer?
It's always tricky, right? Like, how not to repeat, because really, we are both elementary schools, and how not to repeat the things that are happening there. They are not middle schools yet. We have intermediate books. See if I can get this right. So, Wells Road is off to a great start. Something that I've been talking about now for the last three years, maybe, is our Well Done Award. And so, we're starting the year with goal-getters. This is our best start ever. We already have 70 students who have received Well Done Awards. We have never had this many so early. One of our bulletin boards is almost completely full already, and with multiple students. And this year, I've been enjoying, they like staple their little goal-getting sheets or whatever they've been working on to track their data. So, that's been really very special and really important. So, we are very proud of that. Another thing that we have is we have some essayists. So, the Daughters of American Revolution, the DAR Essay Writing Contest, in the past two years, we have had winners at a local level, as well as a winner who went on beyond the state level. But we had seven students in fifth graders who took the extra time to write a full essay and submit it and those kinds of things, which was really a really big celebration of that. We also have the UConn Connecticut Writing Project. In past years, again, we've had local winners and then state winners as well. Our student leadership is continuing. That includes the idea of student council and student-led advocacy. And if you've ever been to Wells Road, we fundraise for everything. The best part of that for the kids, though, fundraise and drives and all of those kinds of things. They submit something to me. They meet with me. We plan it together. So, we really want to focus on their voices. And that's really been so successful. There hasn't been since we started doing this. There's almost like I have to like stop it at some point. I'm like, "Okay, we already have somebody for this month." Like, I have a calendar and all those kinds of things. They get super excited about it and do a beautiful job. Our music program grows, and I'm going to kind of connect it with what Principal Baba was talking about. And that attendance rate, which we-- And that attendance rate, which we have been pretty high at 95%, a lot of that has to do with the extras, right? Especially for us, the music program, which just continues to grow. Mrs. Warner, Mrs. Foskett do an amazing job. Mrs. Lucas in chorus, she's not as much with us this year as she has been in the past, but she still has a really substantive choral program. And kids come in, they are doing multiple instruments, they're in chorus. Mrs. Laflambeau shaking her head because they go out to strings and back and out to the clarinet and back, which is all wonderful things, but that's what keeps students engaged. And we certainly know music language is good for the brain, so we will take that as well because it improves so many other things. But it really has been substantial. Our celebration, because we have been pretty, we've been in the 90s for our attendance rate, but I think our celebration is a lower chronically absent students. We had seven students, looking at the numbers, it's a percentage, but really, it's seven beings who went off of that chronically absent student list, and that's a huge celebration.
That's great.
As far as our connections, I truly had to dwindle this down quite a bit, because I feel like that's the one thing that we do a lot of. And that's important, and it goes back to that slide about attendance and all the other things. This is the second year in a row that I've required students, teachers to do a community charter. What we found for the community charter, again, we feel like we're the school that's giving student voice, it's the first time that they really kind of take ownership of what they're doing. So the charter provides for that. How do we want to feel in this classroom as opposed to expectations that you might see put up in classrooms? Or the rules of this classroom? The kids come up with their words. The kids come up with how we're going to get there. So if we're going to be a calm class, what do we have to do to do that? It is, it is a process. It's not a one-and-done situation. They revisit it, they put it together, they vote on it, and then they talk also about what happens when this isn't working, what happens when we need to come back. And that's really important. I think the connection for us also is, I know that we've talked a lot about restorative work and circles, and so those kinds of things are in contracts. When we are falling apart, we are going to come back to circle. We're going to talk to one another. We're going to take a look at the problem. And I think as the state catches up with us, when it comes to circles and taking time to have conversations, I think these charters are a great way for us to continue to talk as a community and make connections. Our whole school spotlight assemblies are coming. Mr. Whitten and Mrs. Leko, two of our teachers, are really excited to kind of take that over. It was one of the things that kind of fell apart for a variety of reasons, but just the space, and I don't know if you've been in our gym, it's tricky to hear when we're in there as a whole school. So we're working on the sound and stuff like that, so kids can come all together as a school and celebrate one another. But in the meantime, the two third-grade teachers are super excited about like asking students to present a piece of work and things like that, so we can celebrate the things going on in classrooms, again, as a whole school, and making those connections. And Mr. Whitten's class wrote a song this year. So I sent it out to everybody in the school, and he's super excited to perform that and actually just for everybody to learn it and sing. And then our fifth graders this year have an interview club. And so they have been going through the staff because, again, their idea, they wanted to make sure that everybody knew all the amazing things about their teachers was in their words, in their letter. And so they've been making appointments, they wrote up their questions, I go to film it, and they really have connected in that way the whole school through meeting all the teachers that we have. Mrs. Laflambeau, they just moved you up, by the way. You were number like 20, and they were like, why is she all the way down there? You're now, you're now number like 11. We believe, we believe in one another, certainly. So this is about how just teachers making a difference for one another and not just our students. Just like Kelly Lane, we have internal learning walks where teachers are learning from one another. The pilot that Mrs. Baba spoke about is K3 for reading, and so that impacts our third-grade teachers, not fourth and fifth yet, but right now, our third-grade teachers are involved in that as well. And so they are not only kind of looking at each other and having conversations, we have two teachers doing the two pilots that we have. And so they are working together. But in addition to that, they are also going into each other's room about reading, what it looks like, how are you doing so well? Wordwork is something that does impact third grade. What does that look like in your room? What activities can we use? So they are certainly spending time together, third grade. But in general, we also just had math learning walks vertically that came through the building. And again, teachers talking to teachers, which is really important. Our specific focus this year on executive functioning skills is done by a teacher-led group. We were like, what are some of the things that our kids really need to work on? Executive functioning life skills are important. And so who are our experts in our building? Our school psychologists, we have two, our resource teacher, one, actually, she used to be a resource teacher, now she's at coaching position, and myself, we came together, we're looking at materials that they already have, and how could we make sure that that was pervasive throughout the building? So I start with it on my morning message. We've talked about the order, we involve teachers in it. What's, one of these skills should we tackle first? Made sense to tackle organization first. And then we've moved into emotional regulation. The whole school does use zones of regulation to talk to students about how they're feeling. And all of those lessons, they are in folders for teachers to talk about and share, and we continue to do check-ins with teachers and using our professional development time for that as well. The dedicated time for social, emotional, grade-level conversations comes out of the fact that we talk about reading, we talk about writing, but we need to make sure that we're talking about those social, emotional regulations as well as helping one another when things aren't working, and how we can have those conversations. So at least once a month, I go into grade-level meetings, and we're having those conversations on a larger scale, what's working, what's not working, who's a student, who you're feeling like, I'm close, but something's not right, and making sure that those conversations are had, and making sure, again, that we have dedicated time to have those conversations and not kind of these flybys when you're like in the midst of it, right? How are we being proactive about that? And then we also have a school-wide climate, social, emotional, and equity committees in the building. All of those committees kind of work together to make sure that we are reaching not just our students, but one another as well, which is really important. Achievement. So as I mentioned before, having students track their own data, it has to be important to them. I stand up here all the time and talk about, you know, S-BAC scores and things like that, but it all stems from students taking ownership of what they can do, right? If they don't believe, they don't achieve, and making sure that they feel like they're in control of that. This is the age where some, you know, we're moving from teacher-led, here's what your next goal needs to be, to student-led, what does my next goal to be? Well, I'm only here in my math facts, I want to be here, and what does that look like? So that's really, really important. And that's one way from math, but Ms. Amaro, who's our reading intervention, has a way, classroom teachers have a way, they're talking to kids about how they're doing. Talking to kids also, because they're third, fourth, and fifth graders, some days are just harder than other days. And so they race through some, you know, important assessment, get a horrible score, and teachers are having conversations with kids about, is this really what you, is this who you are, is this what you need? How can we improve this? What is it that you need so we can get better? And really having them understand that this is impactful for them. Our PLCs have really kind of changed focus, if you will, that we're really focusing on that data. Our coaches are doing an amazing job pulling together different parts and really having teachers analyze kind of like where they are and what that next step is for them. So we are referring to them now as data team meetings. The work is, of course, PLC work, simply meaning that we're, what's working, what isn't working, and what do we do, how do we know, and what do we do when things are falling apart? But also making sure that that data focus is always present. In, speaking of taking a look and analyzing, the math performance task is a direct analysis of smarter balance. So Mrs. Busby does a lot of our smarter balanced analysis work, and she's also a very data-minded person. But what we are discovering as we're having those conversations is one of the things that our students were building the stamina for is on the smarter balance test. That math performance task requires you to stop and think. It's not just quick math facts, and showing your work matters very, very, very much. In fact, you can have a wrong answer, but if you explain it correctly, you get points for that. If you have a right answer with no explanation, you don't get the points. Having kids understand how important their explanation is, is imperative. And so as we took a look at that, it was really important that we began to make sure teachers understand that, that it can't be acceptable for kids to go, I just knew the answer. Like, how do we make sure that kids are writing down, thinking through, talking out their answers? Are they able to show their work? Because that really matters. Not just for this test, certainly, but it's super important that they understand why that's so important. And then I think Mrs. Baba also spoke to this at Kelly Lane, we are all working for our strategies on when it comes to intervention, so that multi-tiered system entrance and exit, we have criteria. In other words, how did we get here? What are your markers to put you into the intervention system? And where are you in that thing? What has, what has in the intervention system? How did we get here? And then also, how do we know when we're done, right? It was really important, and they worked over the summer to make sure that that criteria was substantial, that made sense, and that we were able to kind of make sure we are focusing on when we know kids have mastered whatever that is, so they can move either to the next tier or out of intervention. Our considerations, I think, are very similar to Kelly Lane. Staffing to support specific student and increased behavioral needs is always, we have certainly students who struggle, and we want them to stay in our school system, and we want to make sure that we are supporting them the best way possible. Materials to increase math engagement and progress, we have been working with, you'll see those two kids down there, and I think I showed it at the end of last year as well, those vertical spaces for whiteboards, they do some, they have some great conversations, really strong math vocabulary. And you will hear that as they are working, and watching them work together is pretty amazing as well. And again, as mentioned, the state mandate, the third-grade reading legislation will be important for support in that. And then we are looking at other ways to, and I know we've talked about before, that IXL program, the middle school uses it quite a bit, but we're taking a look at it, because as I mentioned to you before, we need to make sure our students are ready and understand why this all matters, right? Because otherwise, they click through, then aren't really paying attention to it, and they're not growing. So before we, you know, kind of move too forward in that, we want to kind of take an assessment of the program, what are some of the tools, and do they fit our third, fourth, and fifth graders? Long-term plans, I think increasing our student leadership. When students feel connected and leaders, they rise to the occasion. So what other, what else can we do to incorporate real-world experiences? Because they're already telling us, we know what's going on in the community. The hurricanes, the hurricanes made more animals in the shelter, so that's why we need to do these kinds of things, right? So they are already making those connections, so we should absolutely continue to honor that. Fully trained staff regarding restorative practices, I think is a must anyway. And so the more people we can have fully trained in those practices, the more that that will continue to spread. We want to make sure that we're consistently having these school-wide celebrations. So if you see anything about, you know, making sure we can all hear in the gym, that's really important, because that's our space to gather. And then, of course, not only the pilot will then impact fourth and fifth grade as the reading pilot, like how do we move forward in those grades? That's not kind of state mandated, but how does that move forward into the intermediate space and then cross over to the middle school?
That's it. Excellent. Thank you, Principal Greer. I wanted to go back up just a little bit to the executive functioning. First of all, I mean, I have two boys at Wells. So I, personally, I feel like these particular skills are so important to setting a stage for growth and them identifying what they need to do in order to achieve that. And I was just wondering, are we planning on continuing this? Because I'm just, as I'm speaking, I'm speaking kind of as a mom here, so I apologize for that, but I do see the advantages to this, and I see the improvements being made, especially, you know, a nine-year-old boy, and organizational skills aren't exactly hand-in-hand, but I see an effort being made. So I'm wondering if this program is going to continue, if we're going to continue this focus on the executive functioning?
Absolutely, yeah. Actually, we just talked about it during one of our PD days, that long PD day when we were building base, which was weird. But we even talked about the pacing of this, right? Organization, I continue to, and as you know, being on the morning message is a big deal. Mrs. Burke is laughing.
I have to share.
They were like, so every now and again, what I do is I pop in the classroom and I take pictures of the organized desks. So they're like, my desk is organized, and they're very excited about the whole thing. But that is important for continuing, what are your systems? If things are falling apart, just like we do in other conversations, what do we do to try to fix it? If the hard things, they have like different sides for different things. The soft holders go over here, the harder things go over there. If that system isn't working, why not? Let's take a look at it. But I think what I was getting ready also to say, right now, we're in that emotional regulation place. So we started with kind of just knowing yourself, knowing your zones, but talking about your emotions are your emotions, but what, how you respond to them is one thing. Part of that is also in that emotional regulation space, is size of the problem. We just talked about professional development. We aren't ready yet to get there. So we're going to spend some extra time in there. So I think this idea of layering things but continuing to come back to it is important. We want to keep spiraling those skills, and absolutely.
If I may just add, and when you feel organized and prepared for the day, then you're going to have more success, right? And you'll have less big emotions when you can't find something or you feel you're lagging.
Something really valued got destroyed, lost.
Right, so it was so smart to start with these kinds of things. And similarly to what we heard Ms. Baba speak about with the characteristics and the traits, I mean, it's age and stage appropriate across the two schools. Likewise with crew, so many of these characteristics are also being directly taught, because we do find in research supports that those executive functioning skills, we used to call them, you know, soft skills, but things like organization and communication and regulation is so important. And Pauline Greer truly is the Marie Kondo of Wells Road School, for anyone that knows the organizational structures. And I walk monthly with principals, I visit classrooms, we walk and talk and visit. And last time I was at Wells Road, I truly felt like I was with a celebrity, because every class we went into was like, look at my desk, look at what I've done. Take a picture of me, of my backpack, of my binder, of my desk. And the pride that the children were feeling and the correlation to feeling successful because I'm prepared and ready for my day is really to be celebrated. It was wonderful to see. So those layers that are being directly taught, starting with those character traits with our really young characteristics for success all the way through, is a huge part of preparing our children for learning.
For, right, and middle school with second teachers and all those kinds of things.
Yeah, it's really great.
I think it's great, I mean, just watching the time management skills I'm seeing develop, which is huge. And as you get older, that's something that is essential, and we all have that friend that shows up 45 minutes late. So I feel like this is, there's a, not you, Dave. Not you, Dave. Dave had student, had conferences, okay? Just the time management, all these skills are things that can set up a stage for success. So I'm glad to see that it's something that we're going to continue doing.
Yeah, great.
Does anyone else have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know a few adults.
Yeah, it's so important. Dave, I was not in any way referring to you.
Thank you for coming. Have a good night. Congratulations.
Okay, business requiring action, minutes. Before we, I asked for a motion to approve the minutes, there is an amendment that has to be made in regard to, it lists Ali Zafar as absent, and he was actually attending via Zoom, so I would recommend that amendment. It's not, it's not on the copy, so I think he's listed as both attending and absent. So I think he's listed as both attending and absent, so we're just clarifying.
So I move that the Grammy Board of Education approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2024 Board of Education meeting as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the second reading and approval of revised draft policy 3160, budget expense reports, and line item transfers. Real quickly, based upon feedback from the Board of Finance and from other board members, we did amend this policy to ensure that reports will be done monthly per the request of the Board of Finance and board members as well. So the policy has been amended to say that, that the reports will be done monthly. And the rest of it continues on in regard to transfers and such. Are we, is it considered a first reading?
No, this is second reading, so we can vote, and then if there's any discussion.
Okay.
It's a motion.
So if anybody has a motion for me?
I move that the Grammy Board of Education adopt policy 3160, budget expense reports, and line item transfers as amended and recommended by the Curriculum Policy, Technology, Communications, and Finance Personnel Facilities Subcommittee.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion?
I would just like to note that I appreciate that the revisions were made consistent with the concerns of the Board of Finance. And also, I know there were some concerns raised about the modifications to the report, and they've been updated to include the items that the members of the Board of Finance were more concerned about. Because we do work well with the Board of Finance, we want to continue that relationship. And they wanted to be able to continue to be updated and feel that they had all of the relevant information on a monthly basis. And the revisions take care of that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Board standing committee reports, Curriculum Policy, Technology, Communication. They met last month. We've got the minutes for September attached. Finance Personnel Facilities met tonight?
Yes. We met this evening. We reviewed the October 2024 budget expense report and approved it. We also were advised that the finance manager was able to enter into contracts for diesel, heating oil, and gasoline with East River Energy. And they locked in a competitive rate through June 2026 along with the town. So the Board of Education and the town have worked in concert to secure the best prices that they could. We also discussed the negotiation of a modification to the crack transportation contract. We were able to, or I should say, our finance manager was able to negotiate a decreased rate that will result in substantial savings to the Board of Education and the town, which we appreciate. We also discussed health benefit funding. And we see a positive trend with the health claims going down, which is encouraging for budgeting for the next budget. We also took a look at the trends in enrollment, just to keep an eye on that, see where we're headed. And finally, we had reviewed and discussed the draft policy 3160, which we just voted on. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to, many thanks to Nikki for engaging in the negotiations with the transportation company. Our transportation costs have been going up. There's, you know, lots of issues in regard to busing and the variety of transportation there. And that was really a job well done. Thank you.
No, I'm just doubling down on your dogged approach to peeling back layers and really looking at savings when you are living in a small town and we have tight budgets. And every year seems like sacrifices need to be made, that every penny and the things that you're discovering and taking care of directly are hugely appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Donna or Nikki? Other board-related reports. Cruck Cabe, you sure you attended the Cabe convention? Are you going to talk about that later?
I did, I have it in my update, but I can share a brief comment now if you'd like. I did attend the Cabe CAPS convention last weekend, Friday to Saturday. It's always very well-attended. It's an opportunity to meet in collaboration with superintendents across the state as well as board representation. And, you know, the workshops are very specific to superintendent and board leadership. And so I found them fascinating, actually. I went to one all on facilities, which was, which was new for me. And I'm gesturing to our facilities director, Krista Gray, that's in the audience. We have a number of facilities projects. I was able to learn from neighboring districts that have gone through a very similar process that we're about to start with the capital improvement structures. And a number of speakers and workshops focused on improved communication and really how do we work together in the changing climate that we're facing in public education and other places? Really keeping our focus squarely on students, student achievement, and keeping strong connections with our community. So I did find it very valuable. And it's of note that we did receive an honorable mention. We submitted our communication plan to be considered by Cabe, and we did receive an honorable mention for our new communication plan, which we're following closely for our transparency and communication with our community. So I thought that was to be celebrated.
That's great.
Yeah.
Good. Well, thank you, and thank you for attending as well.
Yeah, it was great.
The Grammy Education Foundation, do you have any updates there?
Yeah, I went to the meeting on Monday. You know, they're really at a point of focusing on recruitment of new board members and problem-solving how to get folks who have certain specific skill sets involved. And there was also a discussion of their finances, which are very, very strong, and they are dying to give money out. So the funds that the GEF has invested have been doing very well in the market. And so they, they really want to fund projects, not only in the schools, but also community nonprofit agencies. Private individuals can't apply, but if you have a nonprofit or a group that you partner with, such as the library, that there's a lot of opportunity to get funding for projects.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's outstanding. Thank you. Calendar of events is attached in the back. I think, as we all know, Thanksgiving's happening this week. Sherry apparently has to go home and cook the turkey tonight, so.
And not in her crock pot.
Correct. Not in her crock pot. So I won't go through all of the entire list here. I'll let Sherry highlight what she, what she would like to highlight. But please take a look at the calendar and see all the goings on. And any board member announcements? Okay, action items.
I didn't hear any.
I don't think so either. Okay, Superintendent Burke, you're on.
Thank you. I'll just share a number of items on my update list have already been celebrated this evening. Certainly, it's great to have Kristen Laflamme in attendance. Celebrate all of our teachers, and she's a wonderful representative of our, of our teachers across the district. Veterans Day was fantastic. I always enjoy Veterans Day. It's multi-generational, which is, which is wonderful. And it's truly an opportunity to feel pride and a sense of community across. And it's impressive just how many veterans live in our community. Family members and neighbors that really all convene. And this year, I did make it to all four, all four schools sequentially running through. Glad it's a small town, and I'm friends with the police officer, so I can just. I'm joking. I, of course, abide by all of the rules. But it is, but it was wonderful. From our youngest students at Kelly Lane wagging flags around the flagpole. It was a beautiful day, the sun was shining, and the pride and the joy that they feel. And all the way through, Wells Road had, you know, a father in our community, Joshua Peterson, who's a veteran, speak and send, you know, a very powerful message. Likewise, at the middle school, middle school was student-led and student orchestrated. They facilitated the presentations and taught their peers the meaning. Why are we in school? And one student said, you know, I'm glad we're in school. It lets us learn and see more about this. All the way through the high school, I love the smaller groups this year, Katie. I thought it was a real advantage for our students. It felt more intimate, there was more questions than answers. So it was really a tremendous day of recognition and celebration and of learning. You know, to see our children engage, ask really thoughtful questions, and likewise, share their feelings about Veterans Day. So my Drummer article highlights a few more details about that. So I encourage people to take a look. Hopefully, some of the photos will also make it in because it was really a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. We've already spoken about girls volleyball, but job well done to you and your team, Katie. It was really fun to watch. And the play was phenomenal. I unfortunately was not able to attend this weekend, but I've heard wonderful things. I did catch glimpses of their rehearsals and things. And it's truly an impressive group of students that are very talented. Thank you to our PTO. Today, we had our author visit, Kevin Kurtz. And he is a winning children's book author in the arena of nonfiction, which children love. Young children really do soak in the nonfiction, all in, you know, nature and the sciences. So that's really a fun, fun opportunity. We are in the throes of the budget, believe it or not. Not next meeting, but the second meeting in December. I will be presenting the plus one, which is, you know, looking ahead for the district needs as well as new initiatives. Nikki and I and Jen Parsons have been meeting with every single department leader and administrator, really sharpening our pencils, starting with a zero-based budget to say, you know, what are our needs? Costs are growing, which is challenging. So just to open our doors and do the same costs more. So we're always looking for efficiencies. And I am very grateful to Nikki Stevenson and her new role as Director of Finance. She brings a wealth of experience and knowledge and just a fresh set of eyes to help us really look carefully at the process. So we are in the thick of it, as they say, with the budget. In my Drummer article this coming month, you will see just an abbreviated timeline because we really do want the community to engage in that process. So take a look, and you'll be on the lookout for different presentations as they come. Another big upcoming opportunity is to convene the Capital Program Priorities and Advisory Commission. This group is an opportunity for all of our board leadership to come together. Two representatives from the Board of Finance, two from the Board of Selectmen, and Heather Lombardo and Dave Pellinger will represent the Board of Education along with myself and our Director of Facilities, Monica, Mike Walsh, will all be together. Really looking at a long list of capital needs across our municipality and our school district. And so this will be an important opportunity to come together across our three boards to determine next steps for funding. And I'm excited about it, I'm looking forward to that opportunity. The first meeting will be held on December 2nd at 5:00 p.m. And this will be an important part of the coming budget and budgets going forward so that we can really be future planning, future thinking, which is so important. There is an early release coming up, as you mentioned. It is the Thanksgiving holiday, so all students do have an early release on Wednesday. I certainly wish everyone a wonderful start to the holiday season. Thanksgiving is my absolute favorite holiday, so I am looking forward to it. And our next meeting is on December 4th. It's hard to believe, you know, Thanksgiving is a little later this year, so we come back and it's December. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've come to the time where it's, I'm looking for another motion?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, have a happy Thanksgiving.
All in favor?
Thank you, all in favor? Hi! Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.